Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call the July 21st, 2020 informational meeting of the Sioux Falls City Council to order. Welcome to those in the audience and those watching on TV or online. Item number two on the agenda is City Council Open Discussion. We'll start with that. Anybody have open discussion today? Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. First point of personal privilege, if I can, my son Anthony is actually here today, so his idea to come. So it's always a proud mom moment when your son wants to come hang out with you, and they've had that 15-year mark, so thanks for being here. Second, for actual City Council Open Discussion, just wanted to brief the council on something that I had been working on for about the last year. It's I've had an opportunity to touch base a little bit with each of you about it. As you know, we are members of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, and through that, notice that there are members on that board that do not that are not employed with the either municipality that they are elected from, the county, or employed. And so through following that conversation and working with the administration, Jim David was a huge part in numerous conference calls we had with their Chair of South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, as well as talking to the Municipal League Board, and then a lot of work done by the Mayor, Director Pritchett, and Director O'Toole, just really learning what it is that encompasses their bylaws, and why, why is this allowed? And so through those conversations, we did put forth a compromise asking the board to review. I did go to Deadwood to their meeting last week and did get to address the board. That change was made and passed 10 to 1, actually, and what it says in that, I can provide you all with the information, but essentially what it does is it puts an amendment to the intergovernmental contract on South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance Board Member Qualifications. And so what it says is if you're no longer elected or employed, that municipality or county gets the authority to either decide if you continue to stay, or if they would not like you to stay. And so there are instances where somebody has retired, and that city did see great value in keeping that person on their board, and that is certainly their choice. So for those reasons, we did kind of meet in the middle on a compromise as far as that change to the bylaws. Director O'Toole will have some more information coming forward soon for all of you, but I'm just grateful for really all the work that went into it on something that is really important and really about good governance. So you'll see some changes coming forth. There are currently three, plus the fourth board member, will be open for that to be on that board, should anyone be interested in working with that. What's quite interesting is the Sioux Falls, City of Sioux Falls does not have a guaranteed spot on that, like we do on the Municipal League. That was something that we discussed, but truly, we just wanted to make sure that we were able to make this one change. It's not a guarantee, but by tradition, Sioux Falls has always had one person on their board, and so we hope to see that continue and don't see any reason why it wouldn't continue for us to have that representation. So it's been a long time in the works, and so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer those, or talk to me offline, just really kind of an administrative-type thing and change. So that's all I wanted to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Counselor Erickson? Any other open discussion? Seeing none, I think we'll move on to presentations. That is item three. The first one is A USD Discovery District Update, presented by Mark Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here today, and thanks to the City of Sioux Falls and to the Sioux Falls community for all of the support that you've given the Discovery District over the years. Since I am relatively new to this position as President and CEO of the Discovery District, and I'm also new to this community, I thought I'd start off with just a brief introduction to who I am, and then I can sort of map out my vision for the Discovery District going forward and provide you with some updates in that. So prior to stepping into this position, I spent about 20 years in the pharmaceutical industry, in positions ranging from a scientist in the early years, to Vice President for Research and Development, to an entrepreneur. And during that same period, I also served on the faculty at Colorado State University as a Professor of Molecular Oncology, and as the Head for Global Health and Health Disparities at the Colorado School of Public Health, and as a Molecular Oncologist at the Flint Cancer Center. So over the course of my career, I've developed a range of therapeutic applications for the treatment of breast cancers, liver cancers, colorectal cancers, Zika virus, and so on. In this position as President and CEO of the Discovery District, I am now on a mission, I would say, a mission to help develop the bioscience workforce in this community, so to tap into my experience and help develop that workforce, and along the way to help bring more of the bioscience industry, more of the pharmaceutical industry, to this community. And in doing so, over the course of the next decade or so, we will realize thousands of new high-paying positions through the pharmaceutical industry and growing that industry here. I am convinced that Sioux Falls can be the next major pharmaceutical and bioscience hub in this country. And by accomplishing that, we will help to stop the mass exodus of the pharmaceutical industry out of the United States, and we'll do our part, in fact, to help bring down the exorbitant costs of prescription drugs and therapeutics. Now, the going forward with this will be quite a process, and I'll admit that. And the first step in that process that I see at the Discovery District is to establish what I would call a critical mass of the bioscience community at the Discovery District. And so I would envision starting locally with that, and that blueprint has already been set at the Discovery District, and then tapping into my broader network in the pharmaceutical industry, ultimately to extend our reach to the USC boards and beyond. So starting locally, I'm sure you are all aware that SAB announced in about the middle of March that they were pausing their development at the Discovery District in order to focus on their COVID-19 therapeutic. And so we are, we're grateful, we're thankful to SAB and everyone there for all that they're doing to help create a solution to this ongoing pandemic. And in the meantime, we've completed our pre-construction infrastructure at the proposed site for that SAB development, and we'll be excited to return our focus there once this pandemic subsides. And in the meantime, we have charged forward then with another multi-tenant building project. And this project involves four other local bioscience tenants. We're still in the due diligence stage of that process, but based on the timelines of the developer we've engaged in that process, it's realistic to think that that building can be completed and occupied by the first quarter of '22. Now, we're already in tandem mapping out then a second bioscience facility at the Discovery District, and for that, we're eyeing out-of-state tenants. So we'll start locally, and then we'll build into these out-of-state prospects. For that, again, we'll be tapping into my broader network in the pharmaceutical industry. We've got a number of tenants already interested in that, and I can say, based on my experience in that industry, you know, the cost of doing business in our existing pharmaceutical hubs, places like San Diego, San Francisco, Baltimore, Boston, even Austin and Boulder anymore, it's cost prohibitive. And so we're targeting companies that are in need of affordable facilities, in a place where the cost of doing business is affordable, and in a place where the cost of living is affordable. Now, as part of that process of becoming our country's next major bioscience hub, you know, by developing that critical mass, local bioscience industry, out-of-state bioscience industry, with one multi-tenant building completed and another one well on the way, that will give me what I need, again, to reach into my connections and industry and take that next step in this process. And that next step is recruiting a contract development and manufacturing organization. The beauty of that for this community is that manufacturing is the major bottleneck in the pharmaceutical industry right now. And so where these manufacturing facilities go, the bioscience, the pharmaceutical industry follows. And this is a big reason why we have seen an exodus of this industry out of the U.S. It started years ago when these manufacturing facilities started moving overseas, and the bioscience industry has slowly started to follow. And so by locating one of these manufacturing facilities here, we will gain the following that that facility has, and bring some of that bioscience industry to Sioux Falls and really launch this process. So everything I've discussed up to this point, those bioscience complexes, a future manufacturing facility, the SAB-proposed project, that's all at the north end of the Discovery District. At the south end of the Discovery District, as you know, Lifescape will be developing its facilities there, a new hospital, a new rehabilitation center, in fact, a whole new campus to replace those, its current 26th Street location. And talking with colleagues that I have in the pharmaceutical industry, there's already some excitement around this, about the idea of having a hospital in a research park. Now granted, this is a different type of a hospital, but the idea of having a hospital of any size and of any focus connected to a research park like this is exciting to the bioscience and pharmaceutical industry. And so SAB, by choosing to locate their facilities at the Discovery District, is doing their part now to help us attract out-of-state bioscience industry to the Discovery District. Other updates related to the Discovery District, from a workforce development perspective, I can tell you that USD, and in particular, the School of Health Sciences, has engaged Lifescape in developing some new academic opportunities, some new internship opportunities connected directly to the mission of Lifescape. And I, too, through the Discovery District, have brought in some funding from the Engineering Foundation, from the National Science Foundation, to support a workforce development initiative for USD biomedical engineering students at Lifescape's facilities. And so there's really a synergy already building around that, despite the fact that we're far from breaking ground there for those Lifescape facilities. One other announcement I'll make related to Lifescape is I'll plug this year's Pork Palooza event, because the Discovery District is hosting this year's Pork Palooza. I'm new to the community, so I was not familiar with this event. I don't know if you are, but apparently this is the third year of the Pork Palooza event. Each year, that event serves to benefit a different organization, and this year, that organization is Lifescape. So we've offered to host that at the Discovery District. That'll be August 28th and 29th, and includes a rib-smoking contest, some local beers, live music, social distancing practiced, of course. And so if you have not made it out to the Discovery District, this would be a great excuse to come out there and set eyes on what it is that we're talking about here. And then lastly, from a future needs perspective, with regard to staffing, we are severely limited at the Discovery District. As we launch into these new projects going forward, I'm already treading water, and if we are, in fact, going to achieve this vision of establishing Sioux Falls as the next bioscience hub, as the next pharmaceutical hub, I can't spend every day in the weeds focusing on the day-to-day operations there for each of these projects. And so, you know, I need to be out in my network, I need to be out there doing what I do, and bringing in that next project, lining it up, always being one step ahead, and continuing to feed the machine as we start to build some momentum. And so over the course of the next year, we'll be looking into funding options to support some new staffing, particularly a project manager, again, to oversee some of the day-to-day operations of some of these projects that we bring into the Discovery District. So I'll stop there. Are there any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Mark. Welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Questions from the council? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Brown. It's exciting time to be part of the district, but go a little bit more about the, tell us a little bit more about the staffing needs and where that would help, or what kind of money that it would take to do that, to bring that position on, or to bring additional positions on?
So again, an operations manager is our most critical need. The staffing associated with that, if you look at the market for those types of positions, we're probably in need of around $100,000, perhaps some additional for fringe to go with that. And again, that position is needed so that I can continue to move forward in lining up our additional bioscience facilities and to bring in a manufacturing facility. And a project manager then will be able to oversee some of the day-to-day operations with, you know, right now, even without Lifescape onsite, even with the SAB project on pause, both of those are taking a significant amount of my time. And now, as we're lining up two bioscience facilities, and we're looking at lining up additional projects, you know, it's eventually going to get to a point where if there's a major capacity issue there, and a lack of staffing could limit our growth.
Tell me, if I can, Mr. Chair, just one more. Tell me a little bit about what the building or the manufacturing process would look like. What type of individuals in the workforce would you be looking for? How does that build into what you're trying to accomplish in the Discovery District? I think there's probably multiple questions there, but maybe what, 10 years from now, in your vision, what would that look like?
Well, with regard to the manufacturing facility, you know, the type of facility I'm talking about will employ about 200 to 300 individuals. And those positions range from persons with a technical degree, with a two-year technical degree, four-year degrees, and obviously, advanced degrees would be involved in that operation, too. And, you know, through internships that we'll be developing through these first two bioscience complexes, I have no doubt that we'll be able to develop the workforce necessary over the years leading up to that manufacturing facility to staff many of those positions. And of course, some of those positions, frankly, will be coming with the facility. And so we'll need to be able to, as we get close to that development, we'll need to be able to account for housing options for new employees, new persons moving into Sioux Falls, and so forth.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Brown, I know you're new to your position, but I'm going to take you back a couple of years when I was brand-new on the council, and one of the first things, immediate concern that was brought to our attention is we needed to find $1.5 million in a hurry. Otherwise, the USD Discovery District was not going to happen, because the state of South Dakota was involved, there was grants, there was loans, the Board of Regents was all involved, and we had to come up with this money, and we had to do it now. And along with that, the presentation was that there were going to be hundreds of high-tech jobs developed out there. So now we roll the clock a bit, had two years. Part of your land has been sold to a hospital, which is not biomed, it's a hospital, and there's not the hundreds of jobs, high-tech jobs out there that we were promised for this $1.5 million. So as I've said all that, I'd like to hear where you think this is going to go after these promises were made two years ago to the City Council.
Well, thanks again to the city for that support. I'll admit that I'm not, you know, fully aware of all of the history. I do know that there have been some hiccups along the way, and obviously, COVID-19 has resulted in a pause to one of our major projects out there. That project predates my time at the Discovery District. But for those infrastructure dollars, again, we have the pre-construction infrastructure in place at the site for that proposed SAB development. That's Block 11 of the Discovery District. And moving forward, infrastructure, frankly, is critical for our sustainability. You know, we can bring in developers to foot the bills associated with developing a structure, and to put together, you know, lease options for tenants. We can bring in tenants that can lease, or that can actually buy some of these facilities. But the Discovery District will always be on the hook for infrastructure. And so having those infrastructure dollars in advance is a key to us being able to bring in a new tenant in the first place. We can't attract a developer if we can't support the infrastructure ahead of time that they're going to need to charge forward with that project. It's unfortunate that, you know, the funding was brought in when it was. There was apparently the sense of urgency that was applied to that, but I can tell you, in conversations that I've had with folks in the State Board of Regents, Governor's Office of Economic Development, University of South Dakota, and business leaders in the community, you know, the story is very, very clear here that Sioux Falls came forward in a big way to make this happen, and that's been critical, frankly, to the Board of Regents recently increased our operational dollars, the University of South Dakota increased our operational dollars. The fact that the city came forward in such a big way put others in the spotlight, and didn't force others to come forward in that way, but it certainly helped things along. And so I would say, based on what I've been able to see of the history, that on an operational side of things, even though those dollars have not been spent out on infrastructure yet at the Discovery District, they were certainly critical to getting the commitment from the other stakeholders involved to keep us going operationally. And so again, going forward, I am convinced that we will be a major bioscience, a major pharmaceutical hub. I don't know what kind of timing people were talking about before, but, you know, two bioscience complexes in the next three years is a realistic, you know, goal to have. That major manufacturing facility, five years is probably the, you know, the best timeline we could look at for that. And so realizing hundreds of new jobs, you know, we're looking at the completion of that manufacturing facility, and so then we're getting close to a 10-year timeline. And so it's a process, like I said, but I'm convinced that we can do it here, and if our stakeholders remain, you know, committed to this, we'll get there, and you have my commitment to keep moving this forward.
Counselor Jensen?
President Brown, thanks for your testimony today. I think, in general, when I think about the Discovery District, I think about economic development, and I think about the future of Sioux Falls and South Dakota. In 2015 and '16 legislative sessions, we provided the seed funding for the Discovery District. It was $500,000 at the time President Nasir came in front of the Appropriations Committee and got that money. I am convinced that the next big thing that will help to diversify this city's economic activity will be coming from the Discovery District, so I wish you all the best. And if you need more support and want to have conversations with us, or when you're out and talking to your sphere and need us, we're here to support you, because I am here to support you, because I know that it's going to be a big deal out there. So thank you for your work, and I don't really have a question.
Oh, thank you so much.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you so much. Statement and a question. My first question is, in regards to funding options for a project manager, what are you looking at for funding? I know we talk about it at a high level. I mean, are you thinking you need $50,000 a year, $80,000 a year, $150,000 a year? What realistically do you need for accomplishing that?
For an operations manager, realistically, we're looking in the $100,000 range. And then for, you know, administrative support, realistically, we need as well, and we're looking in the $50,000 range.
Okay. And you, so you're looking at 150 or 200, depending on how much support staff you need?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And I appreciate you putting the numbers to that and see some of the challenges. I had the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Brown last week, and I am so excited about your resume, and to be honest, we're really lucky to have you here. Your network and your connections that you have in the bioscience industry, bringing those to South Dakota and putting South Dakota on the map is a really big deal. I'm confident you're probably could be sought out well over the nation for what you bring. And so I'm glad we have you here. I hope you are excited to be in South Dakota. I know we've had a lot of good talks about just really the community as a whole and just being acclimated here. So I welcome you for that. Like I said, I'm really excited about the vision of what you want to take this to, and it is a marathon. It stinks that we have not been able to really see the results yet, but this council previously has injected several funds into the USD Discovery District, as well as the legislature, when Alex was there and when I was there. You know, we made it a priority to make sure that this was funded by the state and the city, to show our commitment, because this certainly does, it does impact not just Sioux Falls, but the whole region of Sioux Falls, and then, of course, South Dakota as a whole. I did have an opportunity to reach out to Commissioner Westra from GOED and talk more about that, as how can we partner better with that? And so those conversations, I hope we can continue to be a part of, because we've got to have the state walking alongside of our commitment. When we talk about budgetary and our commitment that we've given, it's so critical to have the state with us together, and them seeing that vision as well. And so I look forward to more conversations with you and seeing how we can accomplish some of these things, whether it's this year or next year, or if it's maybe the state stepping forward and also giving some additional funding for this. I do see it being a big need in our region. So thank you again for your vision, and I'm so excited for what you have to bring here.
Oh, thank you so much.
Counselor Kylie?
Dr. Brown, thank you for being here this afternoon. It is exciting to think that Sioux Falls would be a biopharmaceutical and bioscience hub, not only in the country, but worldwide. As a biology, retired biology instructor concentrated in the genetics area, I mean, 10 years ago, I was talking about all these possibilities, and they're a reality here today. And, you know, when we're talking about just the human genome, and that has been mapped already, and recombinant DNA technologies, and to think that this is available here in Sioux Falls is thrilling. My question is the impact that COVID-19 has had. I know that it's had a negative impact, but you would think that what is happening in the world around us today would highlight a need in the importance of biopharmaceuticals and bioscience. So have you seen it's actually, in addition to being a hindrance, that has maybe helped to highlight the need for this, not only in the region, but for the world?
Absolutely, yeah. I know that it has highlighted our vulnerability, and the fact that we have moved so much of this industry overseas. And so in times of need, and in critical times, such as an outbreak, such as a pandemic, you know, our supply chain issues have already come to light here. And so I think there will be a lot of conversations at the federal level, at the state level, and at our local level here about, you know, some of the supply chain issues we've already faced in this process, and we'll trace a lot of that back to the sourcing and the fact that so much of this is coming from overseas. But when it comes to therapeutics in particular, we can't afford to have, you know, another company overseas manufacturing these therapeutics for us when we rely on them at a time like this. And if you consider a worst-case scenario, a bio-threat issue, where there may be some issues, you know, with regard to some unfriendlies in the world, this could really put us into a vulnerable position. And so there's already a lot of conversation among my colleagues in the industry about the fact that we created this vulnerability on our own. You know, this is the pharmaceutical industry doing what it does, trying to make as much money as it can, and it's up to this industry now to fix some of those vulnerability issues. And part of that is bringing some of that industry back to the United States and curbing the exodus of the industry leaving. Sioux Falls is centrally located. We're the perfect site for what you call a clinical depot. So when you're developing therapeutics, you've got a manufacturing facility, and you've got a clinical depot that's starting to send this out to all of the clinical trial sites, there's really not a whole lot of places in the country that are better for that as far as a central location than Sioux Falls. And so having a manufacturing complex, having that clinical depot to ship this out, we're in a very good position to be established as a pharmaceutical hub.
I had another question. I'm getting what you've definitely said here. Do you think with that issue accentuated that the main...
I would hope so. You know, I do think that, you know, what we've seen with the personal protective equipment is, the state of South Dakota was actually in a very good position, because we've got our own state depot for some of those types of, for some of that type of equipment. There were other states in the country that were obviously caught off guard, depending on that national strategic stockpile, and in many cases, it just didn't, there wasn't enough availability there or accessibility to some of that equipment. And so I think we're going to be seeing that more and more states are starting to develop a regional response to that to support the federal response. You know, I think with two interstates here, our proximity to... two interstates here, our proximity to, you know, some major bioscience facilities in Nebraska, other bioscience facilities east and west, I think we're in a perfect position to be the center for one of those regional efforts in Sioux Falls.
Others?
I guess I do have a few questions. And first of all, the sheet I had here didn't have your title. I always like to use titles, so I apologize, Dr. Brown.
Oh, no problem.
Having not been out there for a while, has there been any infrastructure work that has been done? Roads, sewers, that sort of thing? Can you get, what do we see if we go out there right now?
So, you know, the most recent infrastructure development, and this is attached directly to those city dollars, is the pre-construction infrastructure that was required at that, the proposed site for that SAB development. And so that includes, you know, tying into storm sewers. You know, at this point, you know, you're going to have major construction vehicles out there. So there's no, you know, pavement on those roads around that site. But at Haynes Street and at Francis Avenue, you know, we've got composite surfacing so that there's access all the way around that facility. Again, the utilities have been tied in there. And then the next step, once you've actually got a building on that site, would be finishing that. So the streetscapes and everything to finish that piece of infrastructure.
Okay, so that parcel's development-ready, essentially?
Yes, absolutely. That's development-ready. And because of its proximity, so that's at Block 11, if you're familiar with the Discovery District. But just to the east of that is another block, we call it Block 12, that is essentially construction-ready as well because it's tied into the infrastructure, again, in part due to those dollars contributed by the city to support that. It's tied into that infrastructure for the proposed site of the SAB development. And on the other side of that is the Science and Technology Building for the Community College for Sioux Falls. And so there are already paved streets adjacent to it on two sides. And then on the other side of the roundabout there, on the east side of the roundabout of the Community College for Sioux Falls, is yet another site that is construction-ready because of the infrastructure that we have in place there. So right now, we've got three sites that are construction-ready. And the Lifescape development is, it will put us in a position on the south end to have infrastructure in place for additional projects in addition to Lifescape. So that really, that project has really paved the path forward for us for being able to develop additional projects on the southern end of the Discovery District.
Thank you. Do I recall correctly, Lifescape, I don't think has set a timeline. They still may have to do fundraising and...
That's right. So they're developing about $62 million in facilities. So they're in the middle of a fundraising campaign. Certainly, you know, we were excited to host this fundraising event for them at the Discovery District and support that. You know, I don't have any behind-the-scenes knowledge of where they are in that fundraising process, but I would suspect we're close to executing that site development lease, which sort of locks us into going forward with that project.
Okay. And finally, is workforce and talent for these things you're talking about, are they going to be an impediment? Or are they going, do we have it here? Are we going to bring those jobs? Are they going to bring jobs with them or bring the employees from other locales?
So having the workforce in place for the industry that we're bringing here?
Yeah, just the requisite job skills in the pool of workers.
I think we've got our work cut out for us. You know, building from some of these local companies, and there's already, you know, staffing, local staffing associated with those. We're not having to move folks in from out of state. And then, you know, preparing some of these out-of-state tenants that are coming in for the workforce that you'll find here and our ability in the first bioscience, the local bioscience building, to start developing that workforce to then spill over into the second bioscience building. But this is why these, you know, for example, the workforce development initiative we're doing with Lifescape is critical. We're taking USD biomedical engineering students, and we are giving them the training that they need to work in these types of bioscience facilities, to work in these types of manufacturing facilities. You know, I don't see this as being just a USD effort, though. You know, this is going to require all of the universities in the state to help develop this workforce, to bring to bear the types of staffing we'll need for these facilities. And so there's a lot of collaboration we're going to see over the next few years and tapping into other academic programs at other universities so that we're sure when those workforce needs arrive, you know, we've got the workforce to satisfy that. I do know from, you know, anecdotally, that we're training a lot of students in universities in South Dakota that are leaving the state of South Dakota to find those technical jobs, you know, some of them, many of them in the bioscience industry. I knew nothing about Sioux Falls before I took this position. By the way, my wife and I are thrilled to be here. We've got two young sons, and we love this community. But I knew nothing about Sioux Falls before I came here. And much of the knowledge that I had about this community was from one of my former students, a graduate-level biomedical engineering student at Colorado State, who had graduated from an institution in South Dakota and then seeking opportunities in that field, had to leave the state of South Dakota. So I know that we're already training a lot of that workforce, you know, in our institutions of higher learning. And this is an opportunity then to retain some of those students. Let's keep that, the workforce that we're training, that we're paying for to train, let's keep them here in South Dakota.
Absolutely. Well, it's very exciting. Thanks for your time. Thanks for coming, and we look forward to the progress.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
Next up is Item B, June 2020 Monthly Financial, Financials by Director Pritchett. Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon, Council. Sean Pritchett, Director of the Finance Department for the City of Sioux Falls, here to bring forward the June monthly financial presentation for you in consideration. This will be the last presentation of the monthly financials. We'll take a break for a month as we go through the budget hearings, and then we'll be back again following up in the following month. But just give you kind of a high-level review of some of the economic impacts that we're seeing in the community as we do on each month. While we've seen our labor force numbers, they consistently have trended upwards over time. We have seen a 5% decline in employment since January, which obviously has been attributed to the COVID pandemic. That's been a drop of about 7,000 individuals, according to the labor force data. As far as the unemployment rate that's reported, and these would be numbers as of the end of June, we see the City of Sioux Falls hovering at about 9.5% unemployment rate, based on this national data. This month, which was 10.5%, and we are consistent with the statewide number, unemployment hovering around 13% overall at the end of May. As I talked about and have shared in a couple of previous months here, we have been tracking the insured unemployment data, primarily because we can see this on a little bit more regular basis. It's released every month. Continuing unemployment claims give us a pretty good indication of what's happening in a month in more proximity to the current time period. It is a smaller-scale measure, but to give you kind of a snapshot, so this covered unemployment within the insured unemployment is about 417,000, 418,000 individuals. Based on the Labor Market Information Center for the State of South Dakota, they project labor force at about 465,000. So it does give you about a representative sample of about 90% of employment within the state of South Dakota. And from this measure, obviously, we're tracking much more favorably than some of the national data. If you look at South Dakota, and we can't pare this down to just Sioux Falls itself, but you can see we were hovering at about a 4.5% uninsured unemployment rate. This has been upticked. This is as of the week ending July 4. And this is a slight uptick from where we had been previously. We'd had been seeing consistent declines every single week. We're seeing a little bit of an uptick. We're seeing a little bit of that on a national basis as well. But we're still at a level about where we were at the beginning of April, to give you some proximity of where we've come from. We were hovering on continuing unemployment claims of about 25,000 during some of the peak periods here about four to five weeks ago. As far as inflation, we've seen a slight uptick here. Still very negligible. We were at 0.1% back in April. We're up to 0.6% in the current month of June. And we haven't shown this graph in a while, but it gives you kind of an indication of some of the components of inflation. Certainly, you're seeing actually food going up slightly in inflation. Not surprising for those of us that have had escalating grocery bills in the past several months. But you do see a depression or a large drop on the energy side. And so that is much more variable, but that has had a dramatic impact in the overall inflation rate. So you're seeing that pressure occurring and keeping that inflation rate fairly low. We have seen, on our building permit side, we continue to track a little bit less than where we have been in the last couple of years. We had $286 million worth of building valuations here. And that is through June. That is behind last year by about 64 million. It's behind the year before by about 58 million. Of course, two years ago was the record year that we had. New commercial sales consistently have been behind for this year, or new commercial values, excuse me. They're down about 41% from June of 2018 and about 21% from where they were just last year. Again, this is being driven by apartment and multifamily, as well as other commercial sectors like strip malls, hotels, and restaurants, many areas that have been impacted negatively by the pandemic. We are seeing manufacturing up slightly, which is positive. We also see large increases, some significant increases in the office, institutional, and educational sectors. They are up about $30 million from where they were last year. So there are a couple of areas where we do see some more positive activity. Through June, our single-family housing permits continue to track closely from where we were last year. We're down about 10 units, but very closely from where we've been previously. Multifamily also is tracking fairly close. We're down about 50 units through June from where we were last year, and townhome units are up just slightly from where they were. So we're very consistent on a housing side from where our performance was in terms of units last year. As I've shared with you as a council, once we've received our sales tax data, we've been providing you some updates on those. We have had sales tax collections on a month-over-month basis. We saw some improvements, but they were still significantly negative in the month of June, so they were down 9.4%. It's important to keep in mind, this was related to May transactional sales that are reported to us as June revenues for us. So again, you're going to see a lot of impact from that pandemic as part of this. Back in May 18 is when a lot of the restrictions in Sioux Falls were lifted. And so you're starting to see some improvement in this area. We're hopeful to see continued improvement here in the months ahead. I wouldn't be surprised to continue to see this negative at least next month, and hopefully we'll get to break even or some positive growth here toward the end of the year. But we'll continue to monitor that closely as we have. Entertainment tax collections, obviously, this is the one that has taken the hardest hit for the City of Sioux Falls. In terms of total revenues, you know, it doesn't make up a significant portion of the city's revenues, but it's important for the maintenance of our entertainment facilities overall. You can see that we were down 35% last month compared to June of 2019. That is a significant improvement over where we were in May, but we got a long ways to go. This is going to be a slow rise, and I would expect many months of negative activity ahead. And the basis for that is, if you think, we've talked a little bit about this, where this tax comes from. So 50% of it comes from restaurants. So restaurant activity, as you'll see, has improved, but it's not where it's been previously. About 8% comes from food stores, so that has been a positive area and actually has been up over the last several months. But lodging comprises 14% of this tax, and lodging is one of our hardest sectors and will be one of the hardest to recover. And then bar sales is about 77%. So you can think about that, that's about 85% of the total revenues within those four different sectors in terms of their recovery and their impacts. This will be a little bit slower area. And again, these were from May transactions, so I would have high expectations of at least negative 20% growth for next month, if not somewhere in that range. So that's our expectations, and we're continuing to hold projects within that fund to make sure that we're being responsible with the funding. And we've had a healthy balance in that account, but we want to account for the reductions that we've seen in that particular area. As I shared with you via email, but this just gives you a little bit of a highlight of some of the sectors that we've seen improvements on and some of the sectors that we're seeing the most deterioration. If you've read or looked in some of the news articles, there are actually some communities that are seeing some sizable growth in their sales taxes as opposed to Sioux Falls. And in fact, overall, the state, I think, grew at about 1.5%, while the City of Sioux Falls was down more than 9%. A lot of that is driven by the diversity of your economy. We are hospitality-driven in some respects. I wouldn't say, obviously, it's not a primary industry for us, but it does have significant impact for us overall. So if you're a community or a small town where your lumberyard or your grocery store happen to be your main staples and a main driver for your sales taxes, you're going to do well in this sort of environment as people tend to stay home. And those are the areas, or you can see, those are the sectors that have seemed to see a lot of improvement as people have been staying home and doing a lot of home improvement projects and probably just eating a lot as well, too. So, and not eating out. So, but we are seeing some improvement. You can see on the restaurant side, you know, we were down 44% back in May, and that's down to 28% for June. And that is, so that is an improvement that we've seen from that May activity. I think we'll continue to see that improving, if you see some of the activity that we have here locally. But I wouldn't expect in the next month that we'll be back to where we had been previously. Remote retailer sales have continued to be strong, so people are still buying a lot more online, but they're less than what we saw the previous month. So you are seeing some return back to normal, I guess, consumer behavior. We see apparel still down, but improved over where it's been. Sports stores, ironically, had been down last month, are actually up this month. So as people are starting to get back into sporting activities, you're starting to see them return to some of those sporting goods stores. Other areas that saw some unique improvements, bakeries, ironically, and of course, beauty shops and salons, did see significant improvement here over the last month. Areas that are down that I think are potential concern areas are areas like agriculture did see some good growth and has stabilized here over the last several quarters. But wholesale trade of goods was down again significantly this month. I think last month it was down, and I thought that was a bit of an abnormality. But that was in part because we had such a strong month the previous year, but it's down again. And some of the other sectors that we see down are business consulting and business services, as well as construction. And I think these are ones that we want to watch closely because I think they're indicative. They're not consumer-driven demand ones. They are business-driven demand. I think they could be more indicative of some more challenging things in the economy. So we'll want to continue to monitor those closely here over the next several months. Bringing back this graph, you probably have seen this for those of you on the council before, but this is just our really long-term trending on where our sales tax receipts have been. And I think interesting you'll see about this, of course, you see the month-to-month changes, and then you see the 12-month there and the red dotted line and how that has changed over time. You go back to 2008 and 2009, you saw a pretty significant reduction there. Obviously, that was the Great Recession that occurred at that time period. And what you're seeing there is structural challenges, I mean, systemic structural challenges that occurred in the economy at that time. If you look in kind of that February-July timeframe there, when you're looking at about 2018 or so, that's when we saw a significant decrease or reduction in our sales taxes as well. I think a large part of that was probably driven in part by some of the impacts we were seeing in the ag economy as it was flushing its way through and still was having some impacts in Sioux Falls. And then you have, you see where we're at now, dramatic and sudden reduction, sudden economic disruption. The real key here is how fast that recovery will occur. Will it become more structural and systemic as it occurred back in 2008, or will we make a more timely reversal? Clearly, we are in a good position here in South Dakota. We didn't close our economy to the same extent that other states did, but we are not immune from those impacts. And so we're going to feel that, especially for our manufacturing sectors and some of the construction sectors that rely upon not just the local economy, but the regional and national economy as well. So the next several months, obviously, will be pretty telling for us. On the property tax side, you can see through June, our collections were about 35.9 million. We're were through the first tranche that we received from the county, and our next will be in November after the October payments are primarily made by local property owners. But we are in a pretty good place there. We're up about 4.5% overall in property taxes, so well within what our expectations would be for property tax receipts through the first half of the year. Lodging taxes, we've talked about this and we'll continue to monitor. These are pass-through for us, so again, I know you're aware of this, but we pass these through to the Experience Sioux Falls or our Chamber and Visitors Bureau. Now, this doesn't impact us as a city, but certainly it impacts our ability to go out and leverage this to advertise and market our hospitality sectors. And it's a good indication of what's happening in our lodging industry. And you can see our lodging taxes revenues are trailing. 2019, they're down about 23% over last year and about 30% over the year before that. June alone, they were down just, they were down 67%. So that is an improvement over where we were two months ago when it was down over 80%. So we're trending a little bit in a more favorable direction. What I would point out here is, again, some of this information becomes dated because it is a month behind in terms of when people remit their receipts and we receive them. So you're seeing May lodging working its way through the system here. But if you look at more current data on occupancy here in Sioux Falls, there are some positive things happening, although we've got a long way to go in this respect. We were, if you look at mid-July, we were down on average in terms of our occupancy by about 24%. When you compare that back to June, we were down on average about 33% below where occupancy rates were at. We actually saw in the week of July 4th or following July 4th, we saw weekend occupancy rates starting to hit 85% to 90%. They're not quite where they were previously, but those are really positive things. You see a lot of people coming to Sioux Falls and staying in our lodging industry. Some of that has to do with some of the youth sports that's going on here, but you just, if you, you hear a lot of stories about people that are visiting Sioux Falls because it's one of the few places that are open or that they're available to go to restaurants and so forth. So we are attracting a lot of visitors, and that is helping our lodging industry from that respect. But you're missing that mid-week traffic of people that are traveling to Sioux Falls for work and business that is still, hasn't, certainly hasn't returned to its previous levels. Their average daily rates are improving slightly, too, but they're still significantly lower than where they were a year ago at this time. So some positive things there, but we have a long way to go. Same thing holds true for the bid tax. This also we passed through to the CBB, and that was down. That's trailing on a year-to-date basis last year by about 32% and significant reductions. We're down about $100,000 per month right now for the June receipts. And so those are all pass-through again, but it certainly impacts our partnership, our partner, the CBB in terms of their capacities there. Overall, for our revenues, you can see that our total revenues through the month of June are about 80, approximately 86 million. That compares to about $85.7, $85.8 million last year. So compared to last year, we are up just slightly, about $230,000. But if you look, we are 50% through the year. We're collected about 49% of our budgeted expectations. So you can see the impacts of the sales taxes and so forth kind of starting to work its way there, and we'll continue to see that in the months ahead. But still, in a fairly decent position overall from a revenue standpoint. From an expense standpoint, you can also see, so about 50% through the year, we are about 39% expended through our budget, and that compares to about 41% last year. And so it doesn't look like a large variation, but 2% represents over $3 million of reduced expenses. And the main things that are driving that is, one, obviously, we had lower snow removal costs in the first part of this year than we had relative to last year. The second piece of that is the reductions you'll see in both the parks and the library sectors where we had reduced staffing. We obviously had a hiring freeze for our parks and rec and some holding of the pools being closed and so forth, so that has reduced some of the expenses related to the parks and rec portion of our budget. So that's kind of what is coming through on that. Overall, we're actually have $700,000 lower in expenses compared to the same time period last year. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have in regard to the June financials.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking good behind the gavel. Director, my question would be on sales tax collections. I think your message again today, things are better than we thought it'd be at this stage.
They are. We had projected as low as, you know, originally when we were kind of entering into this pandemic, I looked at them today, you know, we had several months where we were projecting 25% reductions, many, you know, for five or six months in a row. You know, we saw it drop and then, you know, dropped to 9% last month. And so we'll hopefully see continued positive trending there, so it didn't deteriorate as bad as what we had contemplated it might.
That was part of my question. So like, when we're seeing the 9%, we were projecting it could be 25?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. How about the entertainment tax collections? Is that better than expected, even though it looks pretty severe? Is that about where you thought it'd be?
Yes. So we had projected as low as 60% reductions during some of the worst months that we saw for four or five months. So we're continuing to monitor that, and that's kind of what we are working to adapt to. On the capital program side, of course, we've talked about how much we've held for different projects. I think, you know, in looking at this, we may have the capacity to release a few more projects this year to make sure we're continuing to make those capital program investments. So we have two more weeks before we get the next round of sales tax receipts, and we may kind of wait till we see those, and that'll give us a much more clearer picture of what direction we're heading.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none? Have a great day. Thanks. Next up is Item C, Transparency Ordinance. This is going to be presented by Councilors Kylie and Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Kylie and myself are going to tag-team this presentation today. You'll see the ordinance in front of you as well as our presentation. We did get this posted today, but we're working through some just final language and had it posted this afternoon. So with that, we'll dive into our presentation. And truly, this was something that two counselors were working on at the same time that oftentimes Jim, as he works for all eight of us, has to navigate and say, hey, maybe you should talk to Counselor Kylie. Hey, maybe Kylie, you should talk to Counselor Erickson. And so with that, you will see what Counselor Kylie and I worked on together. This has been brought forth with, the language has been reviewed by the city attorney's office as well, but this is a draft. So with that, we'll start our presentation. The first slide here, I just want to walk through what transparency, the clear definition. Obviously, there's two listed there, and I'm going to focus on the second one, but it's free from pretense or deceit, easily detected or seen through, readily understood, characterized by visibility or accessibility of information, especially concerning business practices. And so as we all talk about transparency, this is truly where our focus is, is making more information accessible. If you go to go to the next slide, please. This slide here, Transparency in Action. We wanted to focus on all the things that we currently are doing. There are a lot of things that this administration, as well as this council, really wants to make sure that we are getting all that information in front of the public. The public can not only watch their city counselors deliberate on various topics, but they're able to interact through public input. They also have the option to listen to meetings online, CityLink, or streamed on Roku or Apple devices through an app called Cablecast GreenWeave. Online, you're able to find our agenda, ordinances, resolutions, and supporting material right at your fingertips. You can also get to know who your representatives are on the city council. There's also a wealth of city information at sioufals.org, such as street construction, contractor bids, long-range planning, and who owns what property, and the list goes on.
Okay, thank you. As Counselor Erickson mentioned, it just so happened that we were both working on this separately, and then Jim brought us together. And we have had several meetings now with the city attorney's office, and as recent as Friday afternoon, and then, or actually Thursday afternoon, and then again, we each had discussions, and then a meeting again just yesterday. And it was just finally authorized here this, earlier this morning. So you do have copies of ordinance numbers 30.002 dealing with special meetings, ordinance 0, 30.014 dealing with agenda, the items added after the agenda deadline, and also 30.022 ordinance resolutions, motions, and other documents requiring council approval. So you have that. That is complete with what the ordinance was originally, as well as any additions or deletions that have been made either by Counselor Erickson and myself with the assistance of Jim David and the city attorney's office. So basically, what you do see in those copies that you have, and by the way, these were posted online as well, so this is available to the public now. But what's in red is basically suggestions from the city attorney's office. The blue would be from counselors Erickson and myself. The strike-through would be through, strike-through through original information in the ordinance, and anything that's underlined is new. And that could have been, as I mentioned, that could have either come from counselors Erickson, myself, or the attorneys. As with everything, there's always room for improvement. I can remember taking some of our track kids out to Camp Judson, and in the mess hall, there was a big poster, "The biggest room in the world is the room for improvement." And I think that applies to just about everything that we do in our jobs and even in our family lives, too. We can always be better. And even though I do believe that the city and the council, for most part, has done an excellent job in this area of transparency, I always think there's ways that we can improve. And so on the slide ahead of you or in front of you right now, ordinances 30.002 and 30.014. First, the special meeting notice. It will now include background on any action items, and that is Part B on your copies of the ordinance that you have. And by the way, that background is going to come directly either from the council member that's introducing it, or it's going to come from, if it's coming from a department, it's going to come directly from that individual who's spent the majority of his or her time working on it. So it's going to come directly from the horse's mouth, so to speak. It's not going to be an interpretation from a meeting, notes put together, and then sent to us. So I think that will actually in itself lend more transparent, transparency and clarity to what we have to review. The notice will be available to the public as well, and that will be posted to the city website. And the notice must arrive at least 24 hours prior to the meeting or 4:00 p.m. the day prior to the meeting, whichever occurs first. And I will also point out that for both of these, it is a responsibility either of the mayor, or if the mayor is calling a special meeting, or adding items after the agenda, or if six counselors decide we're going to call a special meeting, because we can do that with six counselors signing on, then it is up to us to notify the other counselors of the item and the content of that item as well. And so that, again, that has to be done at least 24 hours prior. So in the case of today's meeting, the 2:00 p.m., it would have to have been in at least by 2:00, not 4:00, but 2:00, to meet that 24-hour deadline. Items added after the agenda, again, the notice must arrive at least 24 hours prior to the meeting or by 4:00 p.m. the day prior to the meeting, whichever occurs first. And once again, as before, with the special meetings, it needs to be that council member or the mayor or whoever's bringing it forward has to deliver that, make sure that that is delivered to the city clerk as well as to individual council members, too. And that obviously can be done electronically. And that's Part C under 30.014. Background must be similar to what we discussed earlier. The background on that action, action item must be delivered as well, accompanied, and that will actually be part of the form that is submitted when you request to have the item added to the agendas. So the clerk will have that. And then also information, the same information is going to be available to the public, and it's going to be posted to the city website. Okay, under, next slide, under ordinance 30.022. Now, we don't have the requirements of the notification of everybody because it's just following the normal process that is, and policies are already in replace. But covered under Part A require, again, a written background explanation from the sponsors for each regular agenda item, and the information is made available to the council, mayor, and the public. And let me now step back just a little bit and explain why we thought that that was, that's important to us. It's not only important to us as council members, but obviously, it's important to the members of the public in order to better understand what's behind this particular item. I do know as a council member, the more information I have, the better I can perform my duties. So, and we feel that it's important, too, that that information is provided to the public. So what basically, for most part, what we get, the public is going to receive, too, whenever legally possible. All right, continuing on there, the regular agenda will include, and this is the other addition, the regular agenda will include the proposal sponsor, whether it's the mayor. And obviously, mayor, if it's coming from any department within the city, it's, by ordinance, it has to come, be brought forward by the mayor. So the mayor will be identified, and the two city counselors that are bringing the item forward will also be identified. Or the private applicant. And private applicants, as it states there, we often have private applicants when it comes to rezones or right-of-way and street vacations, licenses, et cetera. And that's, that's actually, we're really borrowing that from, petitioners are already currently listed on the Planning Commission agenda, so we're really not going to do anything different than what's already being done with the Planning Commission agenda, identifies petitioners. So we're bringing that forward to our, to our general city council meetings as well, too. So next slide, as Thomas Jefferson has stated, an informed citizenry is at the heart of a dynamic democracy. So the more information, and I've always, and I've always stated time after time, the more information I have, the better my decision can be at that point. If we get additional information, then obviously, at times, we have to, we might have to change our decisions, but it's based on the information available. And so I think this is going to hopefully prove to be worthwhile for us as council members, but worthwhile for our citizens of Sioux Falls. So we're coming before you this afternoon at this informational. The first reading is scheduled for August 4th, and the second reading is then scheduled for August 8, or August 11, rather. And I will further state that to access this, you would just simply have to go, if you were a member of the public, you'd go to the city website to view meetings, and then you would click on the agenda packet that's available. In fact, it's available for tonight's meeting. All 134 pages of it's available in that agenda packet. So we would encourage people to use their electronic devices. It's very, I could bring it up, I could bring up that agenda packet on my smartphone right now. So that will be available to all of us, even on the evenings and weekends when directors aren't available, or, and the same is true for the citizens, so.
In, so just in closing, we just want to reiterate that we really believe that we have found new opportunities to further open up city government for the people's business. Sometimes we hear complaints that the process is so confusing. And so if we can get more information and access to information, whether it's the media, an average citizen, and ourselves, it helps us do our jobs better as well as adding accountability for who those sponsors are. I also want to make reference that Tom Greco did play a huge part of this as well. Meeting with him, he did research of other cities, what they do if they do something like this. And there are many other examples of municipalities that we were able to review based on that research that Tom did. We also wanted to make sure that we weren't doing something different to Tom and the clerk's role and making it extremely challenging. And so they did walk alongside as well to make sure that these changes made sense and accomplished what our goal was, and that's simply to add accountability and more transparency to our agendas. simply to add accountability and more transparency to our agendas. With that, we'll take any questions.
I will also add to that, in addition to working with Jim and Tom and the attorneys, we, we also did meet, even before we met with the attorneys, with, with the mayor and Chief of Staff, Erica Beck, too. And I'm not going to speak for them, but I will just say that their reaction was favorable. So we proceeded with the meetings with the attorneys, but I would encourage you to Chief of Staff Beck, if you wish additional information from them.
And by design, we did bring this with a week in between the first reading, and so if there is feedback or question, we would be happy to have those conversations if something doesn't make sense, or if something could be written differently to accomplish something, let us know, because...
Thank you. Questions from the council to the sponsors? Councillor?
Yeah, that would be a good idea. Just a couple of comments. Congratulations, I think this is passionate about. I've complained since I got here about the fact that we have red notes for our meetings, and, you know, which is a, and if us read the headers, let's admit it, we don't read the header, we go straight to the red notes. And that, that some form of that should be on the information that the public's receiving. And an odd that other cities use to do that, and by incorporating that into your process here, I think that that's going to make it a lot easier for the people to be in tune with what we're discussing, and read it in layman's terms, assuming that the people who write it, write it well, and I think they will, they won't write it in legalese, they'll write just a nice summary. And so I think that'll be a huge improvement, and are here for a specific item, and, or those that are just listening, you know, in general, so I think that, that's a great idea. And, you know, in detail, and, you know, just understanding, can you just, the changes are, is this notice requirement more stringent than the old notice, or how many hours, you know?
This simply just provides additional notice to us when things are added after the agenda. So it is the additional flexibility to make sure that when items do come forward, such as a special meeting through the COVID, we wanted to allow addition to the governing body that comes for, before us, because maybe the health board just met. And so we'll have additional information, and it's on there, but it does provide that background and summary on there. But it, it, it does make it come to us a little bit earlier, as far as just later.
And, and then that puts more of a burden on us as well.
Absolutely. Yep, we all follow the same, yep, we all follow the same rules.
The four under C, that's blue, underlying there, the sponsor of any item added after the agenda deadline shall provide an email notice to the city council members, correction, city council members and the city clerk's office by 4:00 p.m. So that's, that is an addition.
But it does just that, we, we know when those items are added, and it's not surprise they're on the agenda for us. And it also requires a notice as far as what it's about, but it holds us to that same standard. And, you know, we're not saying that anybody has done anything wrong, we just want it to be transparent in the way that it's brought forward, that we...
Probably all been in a situation where we've looked at the draft agenda on Thursday, we get busy, busy with, with work, or with family life, then Friday through the weekend. So I think this, this additional notice just helps to keep us all informed, not only us, but the citizens, too.
And then it, it might have the, you know, and I, and I'm not, I'm okay with that, because I've always said that there's a reason why government needs to move a little slowly, because, I mean, it's yours. And so, if it slows us down a little bit, because, you know, we have something last minute, has to wait another week or two weeks, because we don't have a meeting or something, it has the, the possibility to have that impact, because of what you just said, sometimes we get it and we see these things, well, that won't be allowed to happen in the future. Thank you.
Questions, input? If not, I guess I think, just kind of looking this over, and this is just for clarification. So I did look up, so it looks like SDCL 127-1.16, that, that's essentially material and, and legal advice. Things that are exempted by state law from public disclosure wouldn't make it on these summaries, essentially.
Right, that's why I said, most part, what we receive, the public will receive, but there is obviously some items that... Would be exempt from that.
30.002, just by itself, so this just relates to just special meetings. It, it creates a requirement that we have to be noticed at least 24 hours in advance, and there will have to be, they'll have to send over the summary just of the agenda item or items that will have to be sent over, is that correct?
Yep.
It is, and, and really, we do understand that there could be some circumstances similar to what we've had during COVID-19 crisis, where we've had special meetings, but then the, they're held, because it's important to move fast, but the Board of Health doesn't meet till the day of our meeting. So it may not be possible to include absolutely all that information, as was whether the Board of Health had authorized what was coming... For us, you know, in, in that information, 24 hours, but for most parts, we, the expectation is that information is going to be provided to us. And if we find it's necessary, we can always change this.
Okay, I did see in 30.022, Item A struck, but then I did see that it's, it's dated elsewhere farther down below, so you're not changing anything, you're just removing redundant language, okay. Does this change anything as it relates to sent agenda items?
No.
Okay. What do you envision? Would this essentially entirely replace our red notes?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how do you think may affect something like agenda review meetings, are those even necessary anymore?
Agenda review meetings are meetings called by the mayor that we attend at the pleasure of the mayor, I'll say half, you know, jokingly, because they are his meeting, and he can choose to have them or not. We have seen major impacts, or major changes, from when Councillor Conley and I were in leadership, and just new administration, the way that things are done are up to that person in that administration. And so, they've really changed, and so if Mayor Tanaken chooses to not do those anymore, that's certainly his choice, on those, but nothing requires that to be done, but we'll get more information.
Councillor Conley? Yes, and I would just say that, that ultimately is going to be left up to Mayor Tanaken, but we all know that our red notes to date have, have been generated from that Friday morning meeting, so... That, it may or not, may or may not be necessary, but that'll ultimately be left up to Mayor Tanaken.
Have, have you thought about what the council might receive on a Friday? Would they just go download the same thing that public has access to, which is like that agenda packet off of the website, or do they get something separate? I mean, this is operations, not ordinance, but just what would work?
Yes, that's correct, you would go and download the exact same thing. So, really, the goal for, for me, too, is look at the cost to the taxpayer with this. Now, times is by how many people, you know, really, I'm trying really hard to go more paperless. We still have a requirement to have paper copies here and stuff as well, but we can follow along on our computers and just think of the, the resources that we're saving, and the wear and tear on copiers and paper and money, I mean, if, can't imagine what we spend on printing paper for, you know, the city council. But that is your choice, too. If you want something printed, you can certainly print it out. I myself is going, my, I myself am going to really focus on paperless.
Okay, and then finally, the agenda approval forms, which thankfully have gone electronic and they get docu-signed, would I envision it properly that would be something like a, a box where you would provide a narrative, and that would be required of what is the ordinance or resolution doing?
Yes.
You may be required to stay within that box, councillor.
Yeah. It will not be expendable, it'll only...
The characters will be limited.
Yeah, so, it won't run onto another page, so...
Just for yours.
And, and, and it won't be overly prescriptive, of course, of like, but we would expect a good faith effort to give an explanation of what is this doing, and, for the general public and for councillors to understand.
And, and as we, as we met with Stacy Coyster, our city attorney, we had that conversation as far as what is it going to look like for the directors, or for those designees that bring it forward? And let's be honest, you know, Jim David takes what's on the Planning Commission and just puts it in there. So that's really all that planning would need to do, is just, Jason would just put it on the agenda approval, and the mayor signs all those. Jason can't put anything on the agenda. It comes forward by applicant through the mayor on our agenda, and so it, it's just that background.
I don't think, you know, it may not involve any more than what we currently do see in our red notes, but it'll be something similar.
Just comes from the source. From the person that's bringing it forward, instead of a roundabout way.
Well, as, as you said, as an example, Jason Bieber's writing it already, it's just being copied and pasted, you just remove the middle man.
Absolutely.
And then, of course, the public gets to see it as well, so, which is wonderful. Okay, very good. Any other questions? Councillor Brecky?
One more question, I was just, you know, a little more about the requiring the 24-hour notice to the special meeting. It sounds like when you were discussing this, you talked about, you know, the COVID emergencies, but how does that, you know, like we had the tornado emergencies? What if there was, you know, rioting emergencies? Emergencies where 24 hours is unreasonable?
Those are exempt.
I, I think it would be a...
Well, it's in a different section of the ordinance, and so we're not addressing that, correct?
So those would be covered by a different ordinance? Those like your emergency declaration kind of situations?
Yes.
The, Jim David with the city council office, the emergency section is in a different portion of ordinance, and that exempts you from the 24-hour notice.
Okay.
And that is not a part of the proposal, is correct.
So this is the special meetings, like, like the one we just had today, the budget presentation, those kinds of things, you could do, okay. Good, thanks.
Maybe one last question. So, when, when an agenda is, right now, if I take a look at the agenda, I have, I have the, the title and the, and the, you know, the person bringing it forward, or whatever, and, and let's say a 7:00 o'clock agenda, would that agenda that you would pick up over there, would that include the, for each one, or is that only going to be online?
It would be in the binder that we have currently, that we do provide a binder, and so the intent would, for that to be in the binder, or copy for the public, should they choose to review it.
The binder that we already have, where they put the, did they print the entire agenda packet, one copy for every meeting?
Correct.
They do, okay. Okay, great. Very good. Thanks a lot. Onto the next item. Item 2020 Legislative Discussion, this can be presented by Jim David, our chief legislation and policy.
Good afternoon. Each city council develops its legislative priorities over a seven-month period. This linked process involves both the city council, city administration, and other partner local governments. To illustrate this process, I have in front of you a timeline with, a timeline that shows the process and how it starts in the summer, and then progresses throughout the entire year. What we're working on now is with all the provisional resolution. This is really to give instruction to those who participate in those municipal league policy meetings, on what the goals are, what the platform is of the city of Sioux Falls and the city council. And so, right now, the goal is to have that provisional resolution approved prior to those policy meetings that are scheduled on August 19th through the 20th. So let's review first what changes we're recommending, and this was discussed at the last informational, but it would be removing item number one. This was satisfied by the state of South Dakota when they appropriated $5 million to compete the, or complete the P-25 upgrade. Also, removing item 13, the legislature did approve Spanish driver license tests. Moving on to item 17, the legislature also did approve a bill that allowed local governing bodies, the option to establish a local policy governing the acceptance of gifts for parks, as you may recall, the city council did vote on a resolution that did develop that policy locally. Item 18, the attorney general's office did recently announce to expand the police academy training to Sioux Falls. This will allow the city to catch up on its backlog of open police positions. And then also, item 21, we're recommending to remove, this was approved by the legislature and Senate Bill 2, that required the South Dakota Department of Health to fund 211 across the state. Now, as we look at four options to, to include within this resolution, what I'm looking for right now is a consensus of the council. If there is a consensus, we'll put it in the draft that is put before you in August. If there's not a consensus, we'll have to have that done as a, as an amendment. But the first one is an item that had come up through the workgroup meetings that both Councillor Erickson and Councillor Brecky had participated in. As we all recall, there is a, the State Veteran Cemetery is currently under construction, with the expectation they'd be complete in late 2021. It's located just north of Sioux Falls. The issue right now is that there is a portion of that road that was put in place for the rural subdivision, Andy's Acres, but then a large portion of it, a good mile of it, is gravel road, with some significant ditches and, and fairly narrow gravel road maintained by the township. So, this is, the way this is written, it's not asking the legislature to appropriate the funding, because there is hope right now that state in itself, and with DOT funding, would be able to do it administratively, and not through a special appropriation. So right now, the way it is written, and it may be subject to change as this progresses throughout the year, and you do approve your final priority in December, that it is requesting that that be reconstructed, basically from 476th Avenue, which is 229 just north of I-90, it's also called Jim Zee Highway, to the State Veteran Cemetery. The other item is, is the, the city council supports legislation allowing the electors of a municipality consider a 1% or 1 cent temporary municipal sales tax. This has been brought forward by the municipal league in previous sessions. It has, I believe it has passed a house, but it failed in the other house, and this would allow a temporary tax for a specific purpose for a limited period of time. And that was supported by the work group, that does include other cities, but also Minnehaw County. The other item, I'm going to defer, I know that Councillor Starr had spoke on this at a previous meeting, but just want to turn this over to him, but it would be an item that would support expanding Medicaid in South Dakota.
And, and to be honest about this, I saw that there is a group that is taking out a constitutional amendment initiative process late Friday afternoon, so at this point, I think that that's probably got a better chance of passing by collecting signatures and putting it on the ballot in 2022. So, if it's okay, I'm going to withdraw that part.
The final item was brought forward by the city finance department, and that just says that the city council supports the efforts to raise the bid limit for supplies and services from $25,000 to $50,000. This would address, adjust for inflation over a 10-year period of time, and also brings it in line with other bids. Just for background, services are considered furnishing of labor time by a contractor and supplies as equipment, materials, and priority. And that really concludes my presentation. I just asked for council discussion on those three items, if there is a consensus to add them. If there is not, I will, again, that had to be brought forward via amendment, but I'll just kind of step back and answer any questions you may have.
Well, first of all, let's start with questions on any of these, and then we'll just go down the list. Seeing none? Let's start with the first one, the one regarding Slip-Up Creek and the Veterans Cemetery. Any, any thoughts on that? Any objections? How about that?
No objections.
Any, anybody else? Any objection? We'll just go that route, and we're looking for consensus here, we're not voting. So, can I just ask, not being entirely familiar with the stretch we're talking about, there's the road that goes, I think, just south of that subdivision, and then I believe it turns, and then it's a gravel road that goes up into the new cemetery? What are we talking about?
Yep, we're talking about, basically, from the highway, from the county highway, all the way, so that, and that concreted portion, which will probably be pretty ripped up from the construction that will occur, you're going to have some bridges that will need to be replaced. So it'll take that, it'll go straight east, and then it will curve up to the north, and then the cemetery is just on the west side of that, and so it'll just go up, maybe quarter of a mile. And so it'll just go up maybe quarter of a mile to the entrance of the cemetery. The plan is right now to not go all the way up to the next highway. It would just be that initial portion from that highway that goes north and south.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Council Kylie?
It is, I, I mean, because we have the development there right now, and they, they at their expense have blacktopped the portion of the roadway in front of them. And so right from the get-go, I was concerned that added traffic, especially construction traffic, is going to rip up what they've built. So we, you know, we'd like to do all we, that, all what we can to beautify that portion adjacent to the veteran cemetery as well, too, just to keep down, you know, to cut down on the dust during ceremonies and, and other things, you know, when a ceremony is, is, is taking place. But I, I think it's out of a responsibility to the, the neighboring development as well as just to improve the aesthetics there for the cemetery. I'm not certain if there is a bridge until you go beyond, if you continue to go north, unless they've re-engineered that. But I think we will get to the entrance before we reach any bridge. It depends upon how far they'd want to improve that roadway.
And you may be correct on that.
Sounds like I'm, we're hearing a consensus for you to keep that in there. Next one, the 1 cent temporary municipal sales tax for a specific infrastructure project. How about we, we look for objection to, and this, this would place it in, and what would be the next step? Why don't you remind us?
Yeah, this would be, this would be inserted into the provisional resolution, which again is a temporary resolution that gives you direction as you go to the South Dakota Municipal League's Policy Committee meetings in August. A final version will be approved in November, December. But even before that, if we go back to the timeline, there'll be a legislative breakfast, and there'll be four council members that are on that committee that will meet with legislators, and they will discuss this item or this resolution before it's approved in November, December, but more likely December.
Okay. And if there is, if somebody has an objection, it wouldn't go on, but somebody would be free to bring an amendment.
That is correct.
For this resolution, so it's still maybe added if somebody feels strongly about it.
Or if there's no objection today and somebody decides against it, they can always amend it out later.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would object. I'm not going to support any increase in taxes.
Okay. That one is very controversial. I didn't think it was going to make it through without somebody, so. Very good. The next one is number three. This one is, we took the Medicaid off the table, correct, Council Star? Okay. Raising the bid limit for supplies and services from 25,000 to 50,000. Questions? Objections? I, looks like we have a consensus on that one. But I do see finance here. Could I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, you bet.
Does, so supplies and services, when it says services, does that apply to professional services or is this a different services?
Professional services do not have a bid limit, so again, they don't go, actually go out for public bid. So again, they wouldn't fall underneath this provision here.
Yeah, okay. So like professional services buying software or?
Professional, professional services, architectural services, engineering services, medical care type services, those types of things would be classified as professional services.
Would this be, I don't know, a, a small construction project?
No, actually not. That would fit underneath the public improvement provision that the council is going to approve or take up on a second reading tonight, so.
Well, could, could you just tell me, just give a couple of real world examples of where this would apply?
Sure, sure. Good, a good example would be water, water maintenance supplies. So for example, our water distribution system, we buy the supplies for that, so again, could be water meters, pipe fittings, that sort of thing would be a good example. Services, again, could be anything from window cleaning services to lawn maintenance services, those types of things.
And this is just to, we're, we're just asking to just adjust for inflation because we can.
Adjust for inflation really kind of bring us where all the other states are at. So obviously I looked at where all the other states are at, North Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska. They're all much higher than actually $50,000 or at $50,000. So there's a lot of research that went into it and really the inflation piece of it, too. I mean, you, when you start dealing with a water distribution system or a, a water reclamation system like we have and the supply contracts that we have, sometimes you, you need to react a little bit quicker. And if you had to go out to public bid based on the size of our system for one item, and in particular, some of our fittings for our, like our water rec plant, we, you talked about the other night about the size of the pipe and some of the pieces that we have to buy, they're well over that. So again, we'd have to declare an emergency just to, you know, buy that piece in a short order of time to make those repairs.
And why don't you maybe finish by telling us what you do when you don't have to get bids, you get like three informal bids?
Right, right. So we have a, we have an internal policy and we just don't go out and buy something. We, we actually go out and get quotes for all of these items, whether it be a piece of equipment, a supplier, a service that's under this limit. So it's not like we're not spending the, the taxpayer dollar or showing favoritism or anything like that. We are actually going out and, and searching those, finding those contractors that can provide those services for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Jim, sounds like you have your direction. All right, thank you. Next up is item four, public comment, opportunity for the public to provide input for up to five minutes on any item that we covered today. And it looks like we have somebody for public input. Welcome.
Mark Weber. If it wasn't for this state document that's over 1,000 pages long, that's published on a monthly basis, municipal sales tax, it's over 1,000 pages long. Sioux Falls is about 15 to 17 pages on a monthly basis. It goes into so much detail, sometimes even overwhelming for me. But anyway, without that document, I probably wouldn't even be here. What Stacy has done the last couple, three months in showing you that this particular table that's in the middle of this page comes from that document. It goes into standard industrial classification, which is a federal government way of doing things. Actually, they don't, they don't use it anymore, but South State. Over the internet, retail trade is about 50, 52% to 9% of our revenue that comes from, of our total revenue, 29% comes from our municipal sales tax. The only thing that's not on this table that's not part of retail trade is wholesale trade and lodging, which is in the, in the services sector. In the month of June, what Stacy says is reflects figures from, from May, 99% of this local economy went the wrong direction as far as taxable sales. It's the only part that went up, which is what Stacy said, was agriculture. Agriculture is only 1% of taxable sales. I have never seen so much negativity in our spending as what I have seen in that month. Hopefully it will change. The rest of that I have to show you is, you have seen this graph once before, last November. This is a 12-month rolling growth rate of, of the retail trade, which is 52% of the whole. Your blue line is all of retail trade month by month, and you can see that it's growing at a pretty good rate. What has happened here, if you look at the bottom, this takes some statistical manipulation, but it's possible to do, and it was new information to me. If you take non-store retail out of that, which is in our South Dakota definition is, is remote seller, what the blue line represents is the brick and mortar growth rate of Sioux Falls. The difference between those two lines is internet sales. And you can see that it's quite a proportion of, because really it only started, excuse me, started kicking in as far as reporting, this mandatory reporting really started kicking in, you can tell it by about April of 2019. This is what has been going on in 2020. You can see that the 52% of retail trade has been declining. And also, which is more concerning to me, the brick and mortar line is at 1.3% in June. It's been consistent in 2020 that our internet sales has been consistently at, at a 4% rate. This 1.3% is, is, is quite concerning to me. As a contrast. This is what voluntary reporting looked like in 2018 before the Supreme Court decision. I could go back farther in data because it's available to 2015, but this sort of tells you what the internet sales was like in 50%, 52% of, of the, of the, of the, of the revenue. And the last page I have is a, is a state document. This is up to date as far as what they have reported for statewide for remote, remote sellers. You can tell that at least for the last three months, it peaked out and that for 2020, the actual dollar change has actually been less than the previous year. So anybody that thinks this, this is, it really doesn't make any difference to you people because you get the total, but I'm just telling you that, that this brick and mortar business in Sioux Falls, you know, consumer behavior in my mind has, has really changed. And this statistical analysis, which I hope is, as Stacy has told me, and he and I both agree, it's the only thing that's available on a basis for Sioux Falls, that this is, this is new information and I, I want to show it to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information, always interesting. Any other public input? Seeing none, I'm going to look for a motion for item five, executive session. So moved. Jensen? I, I, I do need the language stated.
Here, read that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session consulting with legal counsel for reviewing communications from a legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 parent 3.
Second. There's a second. We have a motion by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sale? Starr? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
We are entering executive session. We need to clear the room, thank you.